Call the meeting to order and ask you to stand for the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I said I know the sign.
Good morning and welcome to the July 3rd, 2018 county commission meeting. I'd remind you to silence your cell phones, that meeting documents are on the end of the counter, they are not. Meeting documents are somewhere in the room in a white folder. They will be in the room in the white folder. And if you have, if you need a listening device, you can talk to Craig who just left the room and he will be back. That will move on to routine business. Item number one is consider a motion to approve the agenda. Commissioner Bender.
I'd like to amend the agenda to remove item 12.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to remove item number 12. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. And then I need a motion to approve the amended agenda.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Item number two is approve the minutes from May 26, 2018. And it's the commission meetings. Item number A is commission minutes.
So moved.
Meeting minutes, I always can't say that. I have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. And item B is the joint Minnehaha County City Sioux Falls minutes. Motion to approve?
Second.
A motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Item number three is bills to be paid in the amount of $1,054,326.33.
Pay the bills.
Second.
A motion and a second and a comment from Commissioner Burr.
Madam Chair, today's bills include significant bills to armor correctional health care for $182,000 and then asphalt servicing for $390,000. So that brings our total pretty much smaller.
I have a motion and a second on the bills, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes four with one out of the room. Item number four is reports and there are none. Item number five is personnel actions. Item A is consider a motion to approve the routine personnel actions. Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
A motion and a second, any comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Item B is the volunteers in county departments for June. Good morning, Carrie.
Good morning, Carrie Dever. It doesn't happen very often, but we didn't have any July anniversaries for you today, so just, we're just requesting that we record the volunteers for June and we had 273 serving in six departments throughout county.
Thank you, Carrie, and we thank our volunteers who make our county work, along with our employees. Item number six is abatements recommended for approval, there are none. Item number seven is notices and requests, there are none. Item number eight is planning and zoning, there are none. Item number nine is petition for compromise of lien. DPO number 31727, an amount of $5,322.80. Carol Muller, good morning Carol.
Good morning Commissioners, Carol Muller, Commission Office. Before you is DPO 31727 attached. You have materials related to this request. The petitioners are in the final stages of refinancing their homes. The current balance of the lien is $5,322.80. They have had a total of $7,347.94 in total liens that they have incurred and they have already paid off $2,025, leaving that balance of $5,322. To date, the percentage of lien paid is 28%. On the application, the petitioners have referenced that they would offer an additional $1,500. With that, that would represent 52% of the debts incurred. So with that before you is a compromise of a lien.
Okay. Is the petitioner here in the audience? I do not see anyone moving. Comments or questions for Carol? Your motion, if there's no comments?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Burr.
You know, this person has made a lot of payments to us over the years and when you consider that many of these bills are from considerably in the past, you know, 1994, 1997, even 2009, I'm somewhat in sympathy with this.
Additional comments? I guess I would note that all the public defender costs would be paid and part of the human services costs, which included a medical bill, parts of that would be paid and I would be in favor of compromising this for the offer.
I'll make a motion to compromise this as suggested.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the compromise worth a payment of $1,500. Is that your motion, Commissioner Burr?
It is ma'am.
I have a motion and a second, any additional comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Next we have DPO number 95654, in the amount of $451.20.
Thank you, Chairperson. Before you is a lien compromise being requested. In this situation, a lien was placed on the parents on a drug and alcohol, IVC or involuntary commitment that was placed upon their daughter. So they are requesting to have that removed, they're in the process of refinancing. We're not aware that any lien would be placed on them. The applicant is here.
Okay. Any questions for Carol at this point? If the applicant is here, if you would like to make a comment, you can. You can stay in your chair, you can not identify yourself, you don't have to say anything at all, it's up to you.
It was a, we had a process of refinancing, and which, where whatever needs, during the, during the stages, like a couple of things on your guys, which we were not aware of at all, my daughter's dependent, one of the questions.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for the petitioner?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Burr.
I'm in sympathy with your situation, but at the time those services were rendered, didn't you sign a, an acknowledgement that these would be placed on you? No? Carol says no.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I am not in favor of billing people for this type of thing when they're looking out for their family and for their community. I'll make a motion to remove this lien.
A motion, is there a second?
I'll second for conversation.
Second, comments?
Is this person a dependent?
This is an adult.
They can be an adult, but they can still be a dependent of the person.
Is this person a dependent?
She's my daughter.
It's his daughter.
Okay. I don't know if that really answers the question. I mean, you know, an adult aged daughter can still be a legal dependent of, of you, so that's why I asked that question.
Additional comments?
No.
You know, I mean, this is an area that we constantly struggle with, honestly. I mean, the statute clearly states that if a family member is financially able to do so, the family member's responsible for the cost. And, you know, I sympathize and I've become more sympathetic to Commissioner Barr's argument as I've sat up here and heard some of these situations. I mean, I do think that there's a role in society for families to be responsible for family members when they seek help for them. And that is clearly what the statute says. Here, it seems like there might have been some miscommunication on the county's part by not clearly informing the folks and having paperwork signed indicating that, that there was financial responsibility here and I certainly want to encourage family members to seek help in situations. And so I think, given the extenuating circumstances here, I would support a motion to, to abate this lien.
Additional comments? Commissioner Bennigan?
The only other comment that I'd make that obviously Jean has already made is the fact that there needs to be a process when they say that the family is responsible or unable to be responsible. There needs to be an application process on what that really means. There's no black or white conversation about what that financial responsibility is and when you're in the throes of having this activity going on, the last thing you're thinking about is how we're going to pay for it. You're more involved in the daughter's issues. And I agree with Commissioner Bender's comments about, I think the county and the judicial system has some responsibility in defining what that legal function is for.
If there's no additional comments, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Next we have opportunity for public comment. If there's anyone who would like to speak about anything that is not on the agenda and keep your comments to less than five minutes, please. Good morning.
Good morning. This is not on the agenda, but this is a history lesson, it might take a tad more than five minutes. This is brought about by the recent spill over Doone, Iowa where they tipped over a lot of cars, rail cars full of oil.
Mr. Colby, you have to identify yourself, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm Bob Colby.
You're so used to doing this.
Person who lives in Sioux Falls. Anyhow, that BNSF would take a train load of such across a roadbed that had been wet for weeks and had been inundated. The county commission better understands load limits than probably any other elected officials and it seems like BNSF didn't have any idea what load limits would mean and I would be, I'm just appalled. But, the reason for coming forward and talking today is having to deal with an oil spill that took place in Minnehaha County up by Sorum Corner, that would have been 35 years ago. 400,000 gallons of product came bubbling up out of the ground. There was a certain amount of righteous indignation and the state and other entities got together to go after Williams Pipeline. They were the owners of the pipe at that point in time. The city of Sioux Falls had a rep and I don't remember who that was, but it was not the mayor. I was for Minnehaha County, the Minnehaha Conservation District, I think may have been Brian Topp, the DNR was Tim Bjork, East Dakota Water Development, if I remember correctly, might have been Jerry Siegel, and the AG's office had a rep. We were told by EPA that the pipeline company would come and try to segregate and pull out individuals out of this group that was working to try to remediate, that was being remediated, but tried to come up with a solution for a problem we could see, foresee for the future. As happened, we were working diligently and the, the Williams Pipeline people took us to Tulsa, flew us down there, wined and dined us and tried to convince them that they were big, nice people. We were working to get double walled pipe from the west bank of the Sioux River, and I don't mean from the bank of the river proper, I mean the high bluff, from that point down underneath the river through the aquifer to the east bank of the Sioux River, not the river itself, but that high bluff on the, on the east side. It would be double walled, there would be a pipe inside a pipe. The inside pipe would conduct the oil, which was under pressure, and the outside pipe would have airspace so that if the inside pipe sprung a leak, it would not go into the As we were told by the EPA people that somebody would try to be pulled out, we, there was a person who was taken out and that person announced a, a news conference at the old Black Watch and Mayor Gary Hanson said he'd settled with the Williams Pipeline Company. Unbeknownst to any of the other members of that committee that was working with, to, together for the state, for the public's benefit, he announced that he was taking them off the docket.
Mr. Colby, you have one more minute and we'd be, welcome you to a part B if we have to.
Okay. The person who was member of the AG's office was now Judge Mark Barnett. To shorten this, one quart, this is a quart, one quart of oil can contaminate a quarter million gallons of water. Now to make that in a usable fashion so that you can understand that, if each of you use 1,000 gallons a month in your household, 1,000 gallons a month, this one quart of oil would contaminate the use, the water that you would use for 20 years. One quart of oil. Current ex-mayor, Gary Hanson, is now on the PUC. I would not have any trust in anybody that worked as he had worked and he's now hearing things like pipelines under the Missouri River and all such. I think it's back to the county and the city to work at trying to get double walled pipe underneath the aquifer to keep our water source as clean as possible. World War III, if we can avoid, avoid it with this particular nuclear confrontation that seems to be going on, World War III will be fought over water, not over the oil that would contaminate the water.
Thank you, Mr. Colby. And like I said, if you want to come back for part B next week, we would be fine with that. Is there anyone else who would like to speak at public comment? Good morning Diane.
Good morning Commissioners, Diane Reckema, Equalization Office. I just wanted to let you know that I was notified by the Department of Revenue regarding our ag land for the 2019 assessment year. Crop will be going up .19% and non-crop or grass sign will be going up .4%. This is an average of about .84% for the county. Statewide, it's going up about 2.3%.
Okay. Any questions for Diane on that? Thank you Diane for reeling that information. Any other public comment? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to regular business. Item number 10 is consider a motion to approve and authorize the Chair to sign the Shelter Care and Reception Center contract and MOU with Lutheran Social Services. Good morning Jamie.
Good morning Commissioners, Jamie Grabett, Director of the Juvenile Detention Center. Before you this morning is a contract, a three-year contract with Lutheran Social Services to provide shelter care and reception center services. Since the early 1990s, we've been providing shelter care to the kids in our community that don't need secure detention. We've had previous providers. In 2016, we started a partnership with Lutheran Social Services. We've been very pleased with the, the product that they've given us. There was an information sheet that outlined why we use shelter care and the importance of it. I would hope that you would support this contract and authorize the Chair to sign it.
Any questions for Jamie on the contract? For a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second, additional comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
Thanks Jamie.
Thank you.
Item number 11 is a briefing on the fiscal year 2019, fiscal year and opt-out resolution. Mr. Litz?
Good morning Commissioner, Bob Litz from the Auditor's Office and today, the Auditor's Office has provided information on three key things. Number one, there would be a general fund analysis of the cash balance, cash applied balances. In that is the preliminary budget, potential budget adjustments and the six, 13, 18 budget adjustments that are also available. The second part, and Kim's going to head that up, will be a cash flow projection as requested by Commissioner Bennigan. That, that was attached, it shows the projected figures of the cash balances through the 2019 budget. The third thing that I'll be talking about, there's an opt-out resolution provided and I'll be speaking about the FAN group and the number that they recommended, so. Kim?
Good morning Commissioners, Kim Adamson from the Auditor's Office. We've provided for you today a summary of the general fund cash applied position coming out of our budget hearings that were held last month. And what that reflects is that we started out with a preliminary budget, which is reflected at the top of the schedule. We've had budget adjustments of 820,000 to revenues, 715,000 to appropriations and that results in a current proposed budget of $56.7 million in revenue, $58.4 million in appropriations. That leaves our cash applied position at $4,582,527, just slightly above our recommended cash applied position, but within $100,000 of that position. Are there any questions about that information? Okay. Then the next schedule that was provided to you was a budgeted cash, a budget cash flow analysis and that analysis assumes that in, on January 1 of 2019, we'll start the year with a cash position of $13.2 million. Our current budgeted revenues and expenditures will result in a decline in our cash reserves of 1.6 million, which will bring us to an ending cash balance at the end of 2019 of The low points of the year of, of our budget year happen for cash purposes, occur in March and in September. This projection shows that at the end of September, we would project to be at a balance of $3.8 million in the general fund. That's about three and a half weeks operating expenses in cash available in the general fund at that time.
Questions for Kim on the cash flow projections?
I just want to thank you and your staff for putting the cash flow projections together because cash is the name of the game, as we all know. A number of years ago, we were cash deficit in our operating costs. With the projections that we have now, we don't have an approved budget, so it could change a little bit, but it appears that frankly, we're down to about $100,000 deficit or less, $82,000 in our operating budget. So I appreciate the fact that you have supported our financial needs by showing us this cash flow stuff. Thank you.
I also did provide a graph that just compares 2017, 2018 projected cash and then the 2019 budget. And it shows that the 2019 budgeted cash position falls slightly below the other years represented. But then I also built in an assumption that we could manage our budget revenues and expenditures to a break even position, which historically we have been able to do that. If that occurs, that means that our September cash position would dip to 5 million as opposed to that 3.8 million.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Burr.
For those watching, I guess I'd point out that property taxes are paid twice a year and that's, that's why we have such a dramatic representation on that graph, April and November, I believe, and it's, it's not a even thing, it's a wave.
That's correct. Yep. Okay. If there are no additional questions on that, Bob, do you have something else?
Yes, like I said, the third part of, of our Auditor's Office presentation will be, I'm going to go over some of the FAN things that happened earlier this year, the FAN group that got together. It was at the behest of Commissioner Karski and so Dean, Craig and myself and the audit staff worked, we provided a lot of information and assisted the, the FAN club, or the FAN group in, in going over the county's finances. And, you know, the FAN group was comprised of a lot of local financial minds and we were grateful that they came forward and gave their time and expertise and then came up with some recommendations for the county. But this, it's important to note that this is an outside group of experts that looked at county finances and, and currently where we're at and then they did a longer term analysis of where the county's heading and then what might be our needs going forward. The process that we went through, the FAN club met, or the FAN group met over, had four meetings over October and December 27 and they collected and analyzed information. We provided a lot upfront, but they asked for more as we went along and we gave that to them. The summary of findings that they had was that basically Minnehaha County is on stable financial footing and that was exemplified by our recent AA1 general obligation bond rating for Moody's and that, that of course fomented the bonds that we issued for the Minnehaha County jail expansion. Factors for that rating were a strong local economy, a sizable tax base bolstered by low unemployment, ongoing development and positive demographic trends. Also, the county has exhibited stable operations. Other findings of the FAN include that we had a low debt burden. Current debt levels are 75 million, 69 million in bonds and 6 million in tax increment financing and compensated absences. Our revenues, current revenue sources are limited to taxes, property tax and wheel tax and fees charged for goods and services such as the treasurer fees and the registrar deeds fees. Other, other intergovernmental revenue, we have the bank franchise and the telecom tax, some other miscellaneous revenues, fines and forfeitures from the courts and licenses and permits such as pistol permits and marriage licenses. Our overall growth averaged 4% since 2012 or approximately $1 million per year, which is comprised of 1% Consumer Price Index average and an average of 3% growth from new development. Nearly all of the fees are set at specific levels and are set by state statute in the mill levy, so the ability to raise or create new revenues is limited or prohibited by state codified law, which, which is a, is a big thing to counties. And then Minnehaha County is not alone, I think just due to the size of us, probably a lot of our things, the sizes of our problems increase simply because of the size of our city. But all counties are in, are in financial tight times right now. A county provision of statutorily required services accounts for 94% of the general fund budget. 66% of the 2018 budget are public safety and related costs of law enforcement, cost illegal, that's 66% of our budget. Costs of those public safety issues have escalated at a much higher rate over the past six years. Other county operating expenses, public safety cost increases absorb the majority of any new revenues that we get each year. Countywide operating expenses for all categories have increased an average of 3.7% from 2012 to 2018. So the general administrative costs of running this county have not increased as dramatically as the public safety costs is the point I'm trying to make there. Something has happened to my fingers as I've gotten older, I can't pick a dime up off the floor anymore. I heard it costs seven cents to, to make a nickel the other day, so just, Commissioner Barr, did you have?
I just said it was my dime you saw on the floor.
Okay. Steps taken by the county to maximize constituent tax dollars. IT, we, we are implementing a new software financial package and we always look for improvements in the IT department to, you know, to provide the county with efficiencies and, and finding the way forward. Juvenile detention alternatives initiative is, is one thing that the county has taken up. We are pursuing grant dollars as we go along and they become available, which as most of us know, seem to be in a declining situation due to federal constraints. Wellness programs incentives throughout the county for county employees are something that we're implementing and looking at other ways of doing. Conflict attorneys, RFP is being finalized for legal expenses and, and looking for outside help that may help alleviate some of our costs. Intergovernmental cooperation, you know, between the city and, and other things, we've got the law enforcement facility sharing, that's a training space, an investigation place, but all law enforcement, we, we combine those, those agencies in one building and share the expenses. Highway department collaboration between the county and city to share equipment. Planning and zoning, Minnehaha County, Lincoln County and Sioux Falls all do the same planning applications, which standardizes things and controls growth on the outside, on the outskirts of the city. City-county joint elections, we share equipment, services and other resources when we do conduct elections. Lincoln County contracts with Minnehaha County for sharing our human resources and human services and jail services. And the, the recommendations that came out of the FAN club are to maintain and encourage a culture of innovation, efficiencies, creativity and collaboration and continuing to ask if there are newer and better ways of meeting those goals and providing those services. B, further develop and refine communication strategy, educate taxpayers and other stakeholder groups through resources on the county website, creating a calendar of events to educate stakeholders at meetings such as Rotary and the Lions Club. stakeholders at meetings, such as Rotary and the Lions Club, and through the media. The third part, we would share stability plans to maintain reserves at necessary levels to protect, preserve our Moody's AA1 bond rating. You know, based on the information presented, the FAN group concurs with the, with the five-year incremental, the five-year incremental revenue and expense plan. And in that expense plan, we're property, to grow the property tax and revenues to 55.7 million dollars in the general fund. The second part of that, we've already got authorized opt-outs totaling of 9.6 million dollars, and the FAN club recommended an additional 7.9 million dollars of additional opt-out would be needed to cover projected costs, including the jail expansion going forward. And so the FAN group recommended that the county commission use the opt-out as needed to fill the current and projected funding gap. And you know, with all the things that have gone on here, and the things that are going on are look down the future, and we've, we've gone over a lot of information with this budget year lately. And you know, we've tried to look at, if, we've tried to look up into the future here, and it's, it's hard to do, but you know, you've got to, you've got to make some assumptions there and go forward. But the FAN group recommended, and the auditor's office is also recommending, an opt-out of 7.9 million dollars, starting the calendar year 2020, taxes payable in the calendar year of 2019. This opt-out will be for 25 years, which will be through taxes payable in the calendar year 2045. And as you, as you consider this, this recommendation from the FAN group and the auditor's office, I'd like to remind you that July 15 is the, is the final date, that's by state statute, that this county can opt out. We do have a meeting on July 10, and it's my understanding that this resolution will be considered then unless another special meeting is, is designated as being necessary before the 15th. So are there any questions about this information? Very good. Thank you for your time.
Hold on, Bob. Madam Chair, if I might?
Yeah, a, a comment here too, on your, on the resolution that you just gave us too. It says 7.9 million dollars, starting the calendar year of, should say 2018, taxes payable in calendar year 2019, instead of 20?
Yes, yes.
Sorry, just a clarification there. And there's a couple comments. Commissioner Barth?
I just want to thank you, Bob, for leading on, on this issue. And certainly, I am in support of taking some steps in this direction. I don't know about the exact number, but the fact is that many of our costs, we have no control over. We don't know how many murders are going to be committed. We don't know how many people are, are going to enter our jail or into our criminal justice system. The fact is, if, if everyone would start abiding by all of our laws, we could save considerable money, and our taxpayers would save considerable money. But you know, when we talk service to our, our citizens, you know, there are not fewer automobiles in this county, there are not fewer voters. Yet, we're trying to accommodate people registering their vehicles, registering to vote, whatever, with the staff at levels that we've had for probably 20 years. And you know, it's not going to get any easier. And, and some of our citizens really are unavailable to come, or to do it on the internet and, and all this kind of thing. And I've said this before, but I, you know, when I talked to Dusty Johnson, who was then the top, top aide to Governor Dugard, he said, "Well, just opt out." When I talked to the Chief Justice Gilbertson, he said, "Well, just opt out." And when I talked to legislators, they say, "Just opt out." But none of those people are doing anything to help us. And we've gone to the legislature, we've gone to the Chief Justice, we've asked the governor, and none of those people are helping us. And so we have to do what needs to be done to keep our standards up in this county. And I, I don't know that's, that 7 point, whatever million is my number, but I, I would hope that we, you know, one other aspect of this is, we opted out a couple of years back, we did not use all that money. You know, we opted out, I think, for three and a half million. And this year, we finally took the last 600,000 for next year's budget. So we didn't just take it all and then put it in our back pocket or, or blow it on, you know, fancier automobiles or something. We, we've judiciously doled it out as needed. And if we opted out for 7 million dollars, I, I expect we might not use more than 1 or 2 million. We have these other expenses that we talked about in our building committee today, like a chiller for 2 million dollars, potential land, other buildings, remodeling, even our space needs study is going to take many millions of dollars to implement. Anyway, I, I don't know what the exact right number is, but I, I favor us taking the, you know, being as bold as you are, Mr. Auditor, and coming out with some, some number here.
I'd like to remind you too, that that 7.9 million dollars that was recommended by the FAN group was to get us through 2024 with a, a margin. And I would, I would echo the sentiment that I thought the commission over the years with our opt-outs has been very judicious. We do not grab it all and spend it all. We, we, we spend it as is necessary. And the 7.9 looks like a lot of money, and it is a lot of money, but I'm here to tell the public that I would not look for you guys to grab the 7.9 every year going forward. You'll take what you need and, and apply it to the situation. Every one of you pays property taxes too. My property tax bill this year is going to be over 8,500 dollars with my two properties, so I don't take this lightly either. Some people think we as government officials don't consider the, the weight of, of this on other people, but you know, we too are affected by this, and I just want the general public to know that we understand this, we don't take it lightly. But the fact is, the numbers don't lie, and we, we're, we're at a point with this county going forward, especially with that jail coming in, that something has got to give. So.
Commissioner Karski?
Couple things, and it's probably going to be maybe reemphasizing stuff that's already been said, but Financial Action Network was a group of CFOs, bankers, accountants. I mean, these people are used to working with businesses, looking at cash flow projections, deciding as a, as a business, a viable business to lend money to, you know, if you're, if it's your money, are you going to give them more money to keep their business going? They, they've seen our numbers. 7.9 million isn't a pie in the sky number. It, it's a real number that they project out through 2023. Now, again, we're going to take it in small bites, but we have that in our back pocket to use it when we need it. So if next year it's 82,000, that's what we take. You know, public safety is such a large percentage, percent of our budget, and we're always taking care of the bad guys. But I think Commissioner Barth said it to an extent, we forget about the emergency management, the fairgrounds, the museum, taking care of elections, libraries, our rural ambulance, you know, our register of deeds, if you need a marriage license, if you're doing a property title transfer, our treasurer's office paying your property taxes, licensing your vehicles. People get in line and have to wait because we haven't increased staff down there in a long time. But we need to take care of the good people of our county too, by making their lives easier to do business with us. So I think that's a reasonable expectation. You know, 7.9 million's a lot, but it's going to take care of us for the next five years. We don't have to keep going back to this every year, every other year. It just gives us the ability to have that money as was projected out, that we're, we will be, we will be needing it. With a, can't remember, 9.8% increase per year in public safety costs, and our revenues going up less than 3% a year on average, we're going to need the money. And it, a lot of it does go back to public safety, but we do have to take care of the, the good citizens, the good taxpayers that expect a reasonable service time when they come, or, or an ambulance, or a library, when they do business with the county.
Additional comments?
I would comment again unless, but I don't want to speak twice.
I was just going to make a couple. Thank you for telling what FAN is, is the Financial Action Network, and I believe that's posted on our website. I would assume underneath the auditor's tab?
It's actually under the Dropbox, under the commissioners.
But I'm thinking for the public, if the public wanted to see the final report, we could find that out. But I think that is posted on our website, and also it would list the people who, from Minnehaha County, these people that, that Deans talked about, their names are listed there, that you can see who these qualified people are that looked at the finances of our county to come up with dollar amounts. I do also want to rebuttal one thing, Jeff, that you said a little, a little bit anyway. I understand where you're going, but Chief Justice has been very forward-thinking on alternatives for detention for youth and been supportive of that. And he's also come forward with the Mental Illness Task Force, and then the Mental Illness Ta, Oversight Council, that continues to work on how we can be smart on mental illness and criminal justice, and hopefully rework those numbers to go different directions. So he is concerned about what we're doing. Okay, so the FAN is not available on the website, but the report is available in, in the auditor's office. So if you wanted to read the report, you could get it. I'd also say that the legislators, thank you, Olivia, that the legislators did re-proportion some of the alcohol tax to us a couple of years ago and gave us an extra 600,000 dollars in our budget. And so I think that they're trying, and does it fill the hole? No, it does not. Commissioner Barth, did you have another comment?
You know, I, I guess, Bob, I, I would like us to get the, what the tax impact on a property owner is, say, on a, a million dollars, or per million dollars, if we could get that so that, you know, 7 million times whatever. And then I have a couple of, it looks like Kim is giving him some info. In a sense though, crime is, we write a blank check for crime. You know, we can appropriate a certain amount of money for legal defense, but you know, with a judge's order, with, with additional events, it, we don't really have control over court-appointed attorneys or expert witnesses, et cetera. That stuff, it's just a guesstimate, and it, it could be millions more than we've budgeted on any, on any one issue. And per Commissioner Karski's comment, you know, nobody wants to stand in line and wait at, at an office to have a public employee give them what they need. But do we really want to have, you know, 23 or 43 windows open down in the treasurer's office so that no one ever waits? You know, you don't build a, a church for Easter Sunday, you do it for the normal day-in and day-out business. And finally, if I may, on the Chief Justice, one year he raised the rate we pay outside attorneys from 87 to 90 dollars an hour. That's greater than a 3% rate increase, and we are only allowed to raise taxes by 3% or the rate of inflation, which a couple of years ago was zero, on annual basis. So the tax, the, the rate we were paying attorneys was going up faster than we were allowed to raise our revenue. And that was my comment to the Chief Justice.
Commissioner Barth? This is a briefing. We aren't taking any action in case someone is starting to be concerned about where we're going with this, and we do have one public comment that, or one person that would like to comment when we're finished here, so.
Commissioner Barth, in response to your question about the taxpayer impact, a million-dollar levy has an impact of 7 cents per thousand annually, or that would be 7 dollars on a $100,000 property. Double that on a $200,000 property.
14 dollars on a $200,000?
So a little over a dollar a month on a $200,000 property.
Thank you, Kim. Bart, any other questions for Bob? And I guess we have a comment from the audience? You have to come, you have to come and identify yourself again.
Lot of Bobs here.
Haven James, still Bob Colby. When adjourned General Mark, excuse me, Marty Jackley went to the Supreme Court, and the finding was that sales tax could be collected for out-of-state entities in spite of the facts they didn't, in spite of the fact they did not have a physical entity in South Dakota. That was only a benefit for the state and the city, because those entities outside of the state do not have property in the state, and property taxes support city, county, and school. The city would be supplemented or augmented because they get an increase in the property, in the sales tax, but the county was not benefited at all by that, nor were the school districts, because they still rely on property tax for underwriting the basic business that they do. So in spite of the fact, South Dakota won, it was the general population and the state legislature that won, it was the city of Sioux Falls and other cities that won, but nothing increased for the county, counties in the state, or the school districts in the state.
Thank you. The county, the counties do not get any sales tax money. None. Commissioner?
I have one more question for this commission. Is it your desire that we bring this opt-out resolution forward on the 10th?
We are having discussion on opt-outs on the 10th. That's what I will tell.
So we will prepare a resolution with blanks in it then, basically?
We'll at least have a discussion.
Okay. Thank you.
Carol, you have a comment?
I just, just wanted to clarify in following up with Bob, that yes, you have a budget meeting after the commission meeting, but if you want to do a resolution, you would need to pass that during the regular commission meeting prior to that, because you need to have it noticed on the 5th, by the 15th.
Yes, but we're having a budget meeting on the 10th. That's what we were just talking about.
Yes.
The budget meeting is on the 10th, where we will be discussing whether there'll be an opt-out or not.
Correct. But you will not, you are not cap, you do not have the ability after that to go back and put one in place if you want to.
We would put it on the 10th?
During the commission meeting, prior to that budget discussion.
So we pass it, and then we talk about it?
That's how it goes. You have to have it in place by July 15, and that is your last commission meeting.
Okay.
That seems awkward to me, Madam Chair.
Awkward. Okay, we're going to go on to the next one. Item number 13 is consider a motion to approve and authorize the chairman to sign the detoxification contract with the city of Sioux Falls. Mr. Dewey?
Good morning. Craig Dewey, Commission Office. This is a contract renewal for fiscal year 2018 for detoxification services with the city of Sioux Falls. Minnehaha County operates detoxification services and contracts with an outside entity for that. The city of Sioux Falls, as well as the state of South Dakota, pay a fee to the county for those services. This contract is for the detox services that the city of Sioux Falls would be paying for. The total amount for the contract in 2018 would be 1,000, 157,500. And this whole contract renewal process started back in December of 2017. In terms of legal negotiation with the city, it did take a number of months, which is why you're seeing it here in July to be signed. Would be happy to answer any other questions that you have.
Any questions for Craig?
Would make a motion to approve, a second and comment?
A second, comment?
You know, this is another great example, going back to our, you know, last discussion about what we have to do, you know, just can't take and throw people in jail and throw away the key there. Entitled to constitutional rights, speedy trial, representation, and state statute says we have to provide this service also. It's not an option to us, but it is, and it is an expense and a burden to the taxpayers of the county. So this is just another great example of things that we have to do that does cost money.
Okay. I have a motion, a second. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Craig. Item number 14 is liaison reports. Are there any reports? Commissioner Barth?
Just, our next museum board meeting will be in our new archive facility, though it's still under construction, but we're approaching completion on that project. I am very excited.
That's great. Additional? Commissioner Bender?
I think most of the commissioners know that Stacy Teasen, who headed up the homeless advisory board, resigned, took another position. And so there's, we're using this as an opportunity to relook at the homeless advisory board and its mission, its purpose, and you know, a lot has changed since that group was originally formed by a joint resolution of the city and the county. So yesterday, some members of the city and county folks got together, and I'm excited about the process and the opportunity to relook at how we're utilizing our resources and what's, what's the best way to affect and benefit that group of people that that organization, that committee was set up to serve. So there'll be more coming on that.
Thank you. Additional reports? Okay. So, item number 15 is new business. Is there any new business? Item number 16 is old business. And I would look for adjournance to executive session immediately following for the purposes of South Dakota Codified Law 1-25, 2, parts one and two. Parts one is discussing the qualifications, competency, performances, character, or fitness of any public official or employee, or prospective public officer, officer or employee. And number three is consulting with legal consultants or reviewing communications from legal counsel about proposed or pending litigation or contractual matters. legal counsel about proposed or pending litigation or contractual matters.
So moved.
Second? Motion and second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. We are adjourned.[1785.33][1785.33]